...the talk, the call of business, there's orders ordered. I'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please have all cell phone silence during the meeting. I look for approval of the agenda.
Item two, approved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item five, public appearances and citizens' comments. Let's see if there's anyone here to speak. So we'll move on to item six, approval of the consent agenda.
Did we get an insurance certificate yet on...
For D?
For D.
That was something we talked about in these...
We had talked about it, yeah, at our...
Yeah, I don't know if they got... Jeff said that they were on track in... AROC, that one.
Yeah.
I don't think we have, so it would have to be contingent on...
So if we make...
And I put that in...
Yeah.
I put that in here, and the paper certificate needs to be filed prior. I think their timing is such that it renews for like an email.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to give the items of consent agenda contingent on AROC updating their insurance certificate. Is that acceptable for a motion?
Do we have a... Are we on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Do we not have a motion?
No, my way can be seconded.
Second. Can we pull it out now, that agenda?
Yeah, just item six and then...
Now we can have discussion.
Can't be asked about the insurance ticket issue on item D.
Okay.
So now, do you have any questions on... Jay?
You asked, but did you say you were making a motion?
Yeah, and then I made a motion after.
But there's already motion on the table.
No.
No.
So we approved the consent. I'm not trying to belabor this, but...
Not yet. He just made a consent.
I made a motion, we haven't approved it.
We approved this agenda up here, we approved the whole agenda, like there, we approved the whole agenda. No, we're done here at 2:30.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry. No, I have no, we have not approved the consent.
But there's a motion in the second.
So your motion is basically, but it's just on D.
Yeah, well, no, my motion is for the consent agenda, but we had talked about that chunk of them at Public Works in Safety last week, and it was the same thing, that we didn't have a...
So this motion is contingent on that.
But that's why I wanted to add that, you know, still to the...
So that carries over.
And we did talk to Jeff about this, the fact that there was contingency, and he said, as you do, that they expected, because it's a recurring one, that he expected that to happen.
And he said it wasn't...
Keep track of that before we issue this review's permit. Who's the AROC, what's the AROC?
It said race up with the...
The most cars.
Who we rule.
Yep, okay.
And he said they also have to be working with...
Green County.
Green County on the other part of the permit, because they'll leave the...
And I'm assuming that's already happened.
Old McCooley.
That's up to the...
Yep.
Okay, so we just are responsible for our...
Yes.
So we're adding a motion? On second.
Dark second.
Sorry, second. I'm sorry, honey, we're not usually this way.
It's always when somebody's around.
It's hard to...
Any more discussion?
So please, I still have a question. So you made the motion for the approval of consent agenda contingent on... On RAC. Insurance.
Yeah.
Clear as lunch, Chuck?
Yes.
We're okay, then?
We're okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item seven, library board, introductory library director, Holly. How do you pronounce your last name, Holly?
Lugu.
Lugu?
Lugu.
Lugu.
So, we came tonight because I would like to introduce to you our new library director, Holly Lugu. And we're very pleased and proud to have her on board. Proud, very much so, that she began her journey through our education system here in Nuegris, and continued at Whitewater with a major in English. Then went on, went out east to Boston, got her masters in library science. Got a lot of work experience in academic and in government libraries. Did some corporate work at Epic, and did some public library work in Belleville. So we're glad she came back home to Nuegris. Hopefully, she used a lot of that expertise for us. We're especially looking forward to her expertise in technology. The technical writing, of course, is always a plus, too, when it comes to policy writing and grant writing and those kinds of things, that's a plus. Library board has a couple of goals in mind for Holly. We would like to have her work on expanding the adult program in here in Nuegris. I think we have an excellent children's and youth program, we've really got that rolling, and I think the next age group are the adults that could use some programming here in Nuegris. Also, looking at working and doing some things to get the business and organizations in the community involved in the library. Will Holly say a few words, and then we're probably done.
My voice holds out, I can hear myself, so... So, as Linda mentioned, so Nuegris is home and family to me, as most of you know, I'm a little bit deaf anyway. And, you know, my heart is here, and it's also in library, so I'm really excited to be able to combine the two. Couldn't be more excited to be in this job here. And to work with all of you to just try and build some bridges, build some partnerships, and really get some events and services that bring the community together. That's where I am looking to be moving.
That's what it here?
Yeah. So excited. All of us are. New day, always.
Welcome along.
Welcome.
Sorry, we're gonna leave you quickly, because we're on to the next... Or the way to the town.
The two and two.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Item eight, Public Works Labor Safety, discussion consideration, acceptance of resignation of Gary Ott. Gary's done at the end of the month, and gonna retire.
I would accept with gratitude the resignation of Gary Ott for his service to the village.
Second.
Are we gonna do any kind of a thing for him as far as for his years of service?
Well, he started in Florida in March of 1991. Went back and looked. He also, upon submitting his resignation, said, "There will be no party." So, respect those wishes and...
And answers.
So, okay.
But we're gonna do something recognizing his years of service, aren't we?
Do you want, do you want to do a resolution, do you want me to give a...
What's anybody else say?
Thank you guys, Simon, Vincent, I, you know, that's up to you guys.
Is there any customary thing here, or...
We've done...
We often do resolutions.
Yeah. That's just a public record thing, right? Yeah. They're card.
Twenty-eight years, a lot.
I find it either... What do you think? Yeah. I find it either we're both, yeah, Roger, in your experience...
Both would probably be nice.
Yeah.
Let's do both, make a resolution of it.
The resolution doesn't cost anything. The card is... Five bucks each.
Yeah. A quarter, you were gonna say more.
I just got my DNA.
Right after his resignation.
Fifty-five percent Swiss, so...
Yeah.
There'll be a lot, lot more cheap ones. Fruitvale.
Okay, you've got a motion on the second. Any more discussion? Are you not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item nine, finance and personnel, discussion consideration, authorization to advertise for Public Works labor position. That is on page forty-two of the packet. And what's standing is we're gonna advertise on the website and post in the shopper. We set it up kind of the same way as when we hired Joel, that it's... The openings of the opening. Do we fill the position? Now, we've, there's no deadline, I mean, we can, if we get a good candidate, we can fill the position, we can close it at that time.
And the minimum requirements are that he must possess... You have to see that within six months.
Yeah. Must have a CDL. Not, he's gotta have it upon being hired, not being able to get it in six months. Otherwise, he can't drive a truck.
Right. Which I think makes sense, if you're replacing somebody with twenty-eight years of service, we can't have somebody come in and not be able to step into the role. Yeah, especially in February.
Yeah, this, those guys, have they had any breaks the last month?
I guess this has probably been discussed, but I happened to be talking to Joel on the street one day. He said, you know... I can't ima, I can't remember exactly how to put it, but, you know, it'd be nice to have somebody that would be willing to further their certifications. Might be worth putting that into the requirements. I see it frequently, what I see. Adds such things rather than, I mean, I don't know if this was the description of the advertised, but, you know, like under minimums required, willingness to yada, yada, yada. One thing he did mention specifically was wastewater treatment plan operator. And I have seen in past years, willingness to...
Would you want it under like minimum requirements, or desired skills, or...
I would take as minimum requirements, or, or separate heading. It's not exactly a desired skill.
Yeah.
Not exactly a requirement, well, it could be a requirement, yeah. I think minimum requirements.
Just the willingness to...
Yeah.
To consider.
Up to, you know...
Because, because Joe said that, that he has seen people out there, they're just, "No, I don't want to do that. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that." And he thought it was something important, I think it is. And I'm sure there's other operational skills that might require certification.
So how would we put that, with no willingness to obtain?
Skills as tr, skills and training as needed.
I don't know.
Skills, training, and certification as needed?
Yeah, skills, training, and certification as needed for department.
I, I don't know how, you know, this is a labor position, I don't know what the job description for that is, if we have one.
We do. And, and the more detailed one that we have will go on the website, is, you know, so if they want to look more at more detailed information, it'll be out there for them. This is basically the ad that will go in the newspaper and on the website. Because this person would be on call, would have to do wells and the treatment plan when they're on call. So there is some cross-training there that has to happen.
And that's all explained.
And that's...
Yeah, in fact, and we changed something about, you know, but it does require weekends and...
So that is the, um, description that you will send out with the apply, or whatever, require.
So willingness to obtain skills, training, and certification as needed, or...
As needed.
I think as needed, probably is enough.
I think it would be, that's a good thing to put in there, just at least they can't walk into it saying, "Well, I didn't sign up for this." That's a good idea.
And I think it...
It may get some thinking about.
Yeah, it's not just a labor position in that we shuttle.
Because we really kind of expect more than that.
Yeah, we do.
And the job description is way more detailed, it, you know, it says, "We expect you to know how to do a welder, you know, you know how to operate certain hand tools," you know. Yeah, we expect you to be Superman, I read that. Or we hired Joe and a Superman. There's a lot of stuff they have to be able to do. And all other duties as assigned. That's why it's in there.
I mean, that's...
Yeah, I mean, to be there.
Yeah.
Yes, Joe's implied. But you're, you're satisfied with the, once they receive the job description, the detailed job description, the covers?
Yeah, and then Joel, I mean, Joel's gonna have a little committee set up for interview process. He would like to have another Public Works administrator from out of the community to be on the, to serve on the interview committee. So he's given it a lot of thought.
He has, he really has.
I think we got a day in week when we hired him.
Sure seems so.
Yeah.
An awful lot of public feedback, positive public feedback.
Yeah, I had this mentioned as well. Okay, so... I'll make a motion, do we, do we have a motion?
I don't think so, yet.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize to advertise for Public Works labor position. And then I've got to correct that they must possess a CDL and add willingness to obtain full training and certification as needed.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, update administrator hiring and remind your public interview dates. Well, we got it down the board for the fifth alternative, alternate, alternate.
I'm overhanding out. So, on the top is the anticipated schedule for Friday and Saturday, followed by the full cover letter and resume of each of the four finalists. And I was thinking with the Saturday, so I did put it in your envelope, but in the envelope is a reference summary that PAA provided on each of our finalists. There is also a flash drive that contains the video interviews that these fellows completed. And I don't, Finance and Personnel watched those, so if you want to be back and watch.
Yeah, on the off course.
I have the flash drive, and if you, you know, if you can make more copies, or if one wants to take it in my bag, or whatever.
Yeah, I'd like to, okay.
Or if you come in here and you can...
I don't got it at all, what was you having?
Whatever, whatever works.
You've just got the four of them on there.
Just the four of them.
So why do we have a...
Well, in case one of these...
In case they don't accept?
Yeah. Or maybe they've accepted another job already. Because Cross Plains is already hiring, but we were ahead of them. And then Melroon's gonna be hiring because their village, first city administrator resigned last week.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a fireball up there.
Yeah. That's the best.
Yeah. He did a lot.
He did?
Yeah. But he figured he brought maybe too much baggage with him to consider him. And then, the meet and greet, we, we're gonna have it down at Land House, but the community room down there was already booked.
Oh.
So it's gonna be at the Nuegris Hotel, the small dining room, from six till eight. And let's see, who was not, Chuck, you were not on the board when we did, were you on the board, Anthony? What we do is we set up four tables, and we sit around, and then the candidates and their spouses rotate around every twenty minutes or so, just often. You were the orange card.
It was a nice, it was a good, I don't know, a good process.
And your spouses are also invited?
Yeah.
This person lives in Philadelphia currently, or...
Yes. Craig, is that Craig?
Yeah, originally from the local area.
Oh, okay, yeah. So maybe you'll need to come back home.
PAA did confirm that the four finalists have all committed to coming.
Okay. Yeah, they, one will be taking a tour of the village, and one will be doing the writing exercises, and one will be interviewing with staff, and then one will be doing interview with us, every once in an hour, they rotate out. And that worked out very good last time.
Really was slick.
Yeah. We couldn't get Kane to do the village tours, so Paul Fredrickson is gonna do it.
No, I think we could.
I didn't know that he did tours, like if Peter Edder can't do bus tours, he does it.
Really?
Yeah. I didn't know that, till I talked to him.
Well, better him than Peter Edder to do the village tour.
Is that on record?
It is now.
It is now, well...
We can edit it.
Please do. So, forgot.
Things happen.
Be sure to... We're gonna edit that out.
So have... So the, the step to get to these four, can we talk about this out loud right now?
Why not?
Just not say names? Okay, so there were like twenty?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight applicants?
Right.
Then PAA helped narrow that to...
They ranked them.
Okay, they did a ranking system?
A color-coded sort of system.
Okay, and got a list of ten that you all then had...
We did a, there was a video of them, and they talked about themselves, and then the administrators or facilitators then reviewed what they had learned and references and folks that they had talked with, and then they brought in their own personal sort of feelings for what they had moved, and then from there, we selected the four.
Okay. So you picked, narrowed it down into the four, and the alternate base, from that, those ten?
Yeah.
It, it was a long, we were here a long time.
About three hours?
Yeah.
Maybe a little more? Because they would do the, they'd get the video, and then they, like Ben said, and they would go through like this, telling us.
Yeah, the stuff that's in your envelope.
Yeah.
That's in there.
Okay.
They reviewed, and then they also had some side notes on their experiences talking with other folks, and the feeling that they got, and so...
Because I mean, just like on a quick scan of these, there's a variety of different public experiences in, you know, like, whether it's Public Works, or village administration, or clerk office work, or, you know what I mean, there's, they have a variety of...
Right.
Steps that maybe they've gone through to get to...
And I would have to say, I don't know, that not everybody brought the whole plate to the table.
Okay, yeah.
So, could you say that?
But we're taking these home with us.
Yeah, you take them, you can look for it on Saturday.
We're gonna have a neighborhood party.
And... On Saturday.
My envelope right now is saying, "Remember this."
Yeah, we, I think, we have to give our...
When, on Saturday, though, when we do, the end of the Saturday, when we're done, we need to have, turn in a PAA or something.
Yeah.
They'll shred them or whatever.
Okay, so...
Yeah, sorry, those parts broke on one, I was putting it together, and it was...
Okay. Well, thank you for your work on that.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, no matter what PAA charges us with every penny, I mean, there's no way.
So well, but you think, I mean, it really moves it along, they did, I think they do a lot of background. I was blown away with the kinds of things they could bring in and talk about, the feelings they got, but...
I mean, they've experienced with some of this.
Yeah. And, and one thing would lead to another, and then they'd call someone else, and so they kind of got to handle it.
Well, especially with so many local communities right now looking for this position?
Yeah. I mean, they, they pushed hard to keep us, we had to cross planes. They really did. They really worked a little bit.
No, I think you're right, I think it was worth it.
Well, they normally would have, just to make sure.
So, since you guys have been into this, how do you think we stand as far as getting a, a good, solid administrator?
I...
I think we'll know more, you know, when you see a video that's six minutes long, it's hard to...
And it's canned, you know, it's canned in a sense, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, but...
I think from the four...
Who's off the top of your head?
I think we've got four good candidates, I...
Yeah.
I think we'll be able to make a group of positive pick from one of them four, I think they're all gonna be good.
I think every one of them has a...
I don't think we're gonna have another Brian in those.
I think we knew that going in.
Yeah, and that just isn't gonna be it again, I mean, that was probably a once-in-a-lifetime shot to get that, you know.
Yeah, it just kind of blew everybody else.
Yeah.
I think everybody brings a strong suit to the table, and a different one, not everybody's bringing the same thing to the table. So there's gonna be a learning curve for, for each of them, don't you think?
Yeah.
How far apart are, how, this is just a heck of it, how far apart do you think they are in respect to us making the consensus decision? Or is there... I'm just asking, I mean, it's not to say no.
Yeah, you mean, you mean, how far apart?
Are they all equally qualified as, overall equally qualified, even though they bring different skills and...
I think they can all handle it, I think that they all have their strong areas of expertise, and some areas they might have to learn, like somebody might not be as... Not that they're not familiar with budgets, but one has a strong suit in budgets, one has another strong suit in utilities, and so, you know, everybody brings something a little different. They've all, I would say that they all have had, have dabbled in everything, so, and they've all got some incredible, you know, not necessarily masters, degrees in that area, so...
I think you'll know, Chuck, once you read that through, and maybe...
Yeah, you'll be...
I think by the time...
Yeah, I just wanted to know what you guys thought going in, and then...
I don't think you can tell till we do the meet and greet, I think that's the first, first real engagement. You'll be surprised, the meet and greet is a... It's amazing. It is, you almost, it's almost like you know. Once you talk to them, discussion, I felt that way. It's like you know who the candidates debate. Despite all the reading you do, don't you agree?
Yep.
Once you sit down with them?
Well, it might not work that way this time.
Right.
The first time, it just, yeah.
It works very well. It was amazing, and we all came back insane.
Well, that's, that's, that's a positive, right?
Yeah, yeah, very much so, I think. And I would say on paper last time, those pretty seemed similar.
They did.
So.
I mean, yeah, but I think, but then when Brian did his interview with us, I mean, it was just
Right.
Boom.
Yeah, it was.
And you have to keep in mind things, you know, what is a village? You think where are we? Where do you need the most guidance, what?
Right.
What are needs now and going forward and looking ahead in the next?
Who's strong in those areas? And I think in any case, you never really know until they're in that position. One thing, I think that the meet and greet gives you a feel for the personality and incentive and intuitiveness that you can't get other boys. I mean, I think the videos are, are good, but they're also staged, so.
Right.
Yeah, like a resume or
Right.
Then on Saturday, then we'll have questions that can be asked. I mean, we we'll probably use the same format as we did when we interviewed Brian and the people at that Brown. Same kind of questions.
And PAA provides those to us, so we don't have to worry about But they do allow you at the end to ask a question that I remember asking one on the list, so if you're ready for a barn burner question, you get it ready.
Yeah.
To ask it.
The worst idea. So will they, will the PAA moderate these?
Yes, they'll be here. One will interview us and then one will probably be either back with staff or watching over the person doing the writing exercise. And probably kind of keep that writing exercise and that issue, keep everything flowing, so they, one's doing the tour. So on, so there'll be two of them here to do that.
Should be exciting.
Class has been, sounds like it.
Okay, that was an update. Okay, I intend to over this question configuration policy for appointing to big and trusty positions.
Bill Morgan just emailed this today. Email is, here is his draft of the ordinance. Since this is an optional process, the board should feel free to make changes in my suggestions. For example, I've not made it mandatory that they fill a vacancy. They may either wait until the general election or they may be for a special election. However, if they do determine to fill a vacancy, they must solicit interest for at least two weeks. That period of time can be longer or shorter. Likewise, I have suggested that they may, but are not required to interview candidates. All of those things can be changed if you desire. So it's his first draft at it, basically. I don't suppose, Lynn, you could give us an off the cuff cost of a special election?
You don't want to know.
Yeah, it would, it would be expensive. Um, I, I can tell you from our end, it would be probably under a thousand for the labor and that, but the programming, yeah, the programming of the machine for a special election and taking ballots would probably worth a full a thousand dollars.
But to have a special election you gotta somebody that's gonna run. Maybe at least two. You know, team, team working in that.
I would think the special election is just out regardless.
I agree.
I can't imagine any
Which is why I like that it says they may determine to hold a special election.
I just was curious how much money that was costing.
I think on the, on the broad this thing covers a lot of, uh, issues that I had and you know, I, I think our, our choices to appoint, elect or leave vacant would depend on the timing. Right, which doesn't even have to be stated in a resolution. I'm sure, I'm still not comfortable with this resolution thing. I don't know how that
This would be a ordinance.
Yeah, but Bill said he originally said he thought it would be better as a resolution. I see the wording here, so that's, that's a plus in my mind. But I think, I think he's covered a lot of questions I had, seat candidates, set a timeframe, gather some qualifications, a resume, an interview. We've all been through that as, as elected people, you know, I think some should just say, oh yeah, I think I'd like to do that. Well, why in hell wouldn't you do it six weeks ago? You could've taken our papers and
So basically, we can design our own procedure dependent upon the timing, the situation, the number of seats vacant, so that's, this is choreographed by us as we see fit.
Yeah, the state statutes don't they don't give any there's, there's no, there's no statute covering how you appoint. There's only statutes for election, you know.
So what's
Your options for either to elect or appoint. So so if, you know, supposing Shaun Dow had resigned in December, we probably, I think would've said, oh, let's just, you know, have an election candidate in April. So, so we've got one. Well, anyway, but, but that's an unusual situation after having gone through you know, terrible but I, I, I think in, in general that we, what you would do and you know, had someone resigned in November, you may wanna wait till April. Or, you know, so they can be on the
Ballot.
On the actual ballot. But that's up to
And it's a group of people making the decision.
I just think we need a, you know, a timeframe and a requisite that we at least see, we interview or look at, I, I, I would prefer both. You know, written, this is why I wanna do this, this is what I think I bring to the table. And then a personal interview to see well, I think, cause we aren't representing the
Yeah.
the voters of the village and, you know, I've had, I've had people already come up to me and say well, how are you gonna do this? What if I don't like the person that you know, or somebody that I wouldn't vote for because of this or that or the other? And we can't cover all of that, obviously.
Do the best we can.
Do the best we can.
And I think that like, this gives us all those options.
It does.
You know, like It'll, it asks them to submit their name for consideration. You know, it provides a time period of at least two weeks for them to apply. And then we can set you know, whoever's on the village board can set the timeframe then for what the process after the application period is. Asks us to consider, you know, things like their service to the community and the board in the past. You know, stay away from conflicts of interest, allows you to interview them after they've applied.
So then
I, I would like to see, you know, two weeks, I'd like to see just a month. For, for
You mean open the position and close it?
Oh, yeah.
Can, can add in a month?
I think a month should, should be able to do it in a month. I, I just see the two weeks, I think that that's pretty short.
For people to apply to the position?
Well, apply and, I'm talking about apply and
Oh, I think, but this is just the application process.
Right.
Two weeks.
Two weeks is fine for application.
Yeah, I agree. Don't wanna make it too long.
Maybe it is, I don't know the way things are going this time, maybe you do.
So, but I have a question.
But I think, I think if we all, you know, take this stuff home and think about it
Yeah.
and come back and we can formulate something that I, you know, I hate to keep dwelling on years gone by, but I do remember past instances where people moved to town. Some of them had lived here, some of them had grown up here, moved away, came back in retirement, whatever. They moved, they, they moved to town and within two weeks, they were running for every possible position, school board, village board. You know, talking
Yeah.
And really didn't have any concept of what was going on in the community.
Yeah, and that's such a wonderful
If I got time to do this, I'm gonna do it and, you know, it's great and maybe their heart was in the right place, but
But it doesn't always work so well.
It doesn't always work. So
An election provides a screening process for that, this would do.
Yeah.
This would too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I think
So what is the steps involved in, what are the steps involved in this becoming an ordinance? It has to go to a
It doesn't require a public hearing.
Does it?
No, I mean you could, we put it on as discussion consideration if you wanted to make tweaks to it and say tonight that you're approving it, I think you could. The only question that I had when I was looking at it is, um, when it talks about vacancies and I, maybe this is the intention, but it, it talks about, or on other boards, commissions, committees of the village shall be made by the village board, so any vacancy, for whatever reason, a member of any board, council, commissioner, committee in the village shall be filled. So if, does this ordinance then pertain to
Yeah, that would be my question.
I think that probably came from the state's attitude.
Yeah, and I don't know whether you want it that way or you want that clarified some
That may become cumbersome for the village board.
So you're thinking that limit this just to village board that are
Well, we already have, I mean, any vacancy on any board, commission, committee would require majority vote of the board anyway. I mean, it would be an appointment, you'd say, wanna appoint someone, something like we just did, what, last week? The historic preservation appointed somebody. Um, historic preservation brought forth a name. You guys still have to approve it. But when I read this, I would be concerned that
Those steps have to be followed before ever you say go.
I mean, that's something probably in a larger community that might be the way to go. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure. I guess it would be something, uh, to think about. I do have a question before I continue on. So, at the end of the election, let's say we have a write-in candidate. And which, I don't know, you do have a write-in?
Yes.
Okay. If the write-in candidate has four signatures they're in.
Or write-in votes?
Write-in vote.
Possibly.
We have somebody else who's not a write-in, has six, then they're in.
So, okay, so whoever has the majority of votes, so there is a likelihood that one of those positions could be filled?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and possibly more than that because there will have a lot of write-ins that night.
One vote will?
Right, all the votes will have to be counted. We'll have a lot of votes, we'll count them that night and we've already, I are planning to do a caucus the next morning because that's a long day for those election officials, so we're going to count that night, but we're not going to release official results until we've had a chance to come in and caucus the next day and look at it and make sure that all our numbers are right. And then, you know, we might have three people that each have ten votes. And, you know, there's one, one on the ballot, we have three people who have ten votes. I'm not sure what happens then because that's a tie.
We have a registered write-in?
We do.
Can you, can we find?
Mike answered.
So, does a registered write-in take precedent over
If
Okay.
The only thing, um, with the registered write-in, they, Philadelphia work and can campaign, spend money on their campaign. And if someone, if the voter asks at the polling place, do you have any registered write-in candidates? They're able to say that name, yeah, and, and give the name.
Okay, but if two other or three other write-ins have more votes
then they would win the election.
Okay.
So they got twenty, the registered write-in got twenty votes and I got thirty. You would, as just a write-in?
So, let's say you have three candidates that are with ten votes apiece and one says no. I don't want that position. Then the other two are in, then we end it right there, correct?
Yeah, yeah, obviously they have to.
Okay.
Accept decision.
But if there's three and they all say, okay, that would be of interest to me, then what?
Then I'm calling the elections commission.
Now we're flipping coins or drawing straws, yeah. Which I mean, literally happens.
So then we could choose one of these
I'm guessing they're probably gonna run off process, don't they?
I don't know, and some, it might be drawing hands.
Or drawing, drawing any of them.
I think we literally draw Or flip coins or draw straws, I don't know, it's like, it's weird things like that.
Yeah, so it isn't, we aren't given an interview, or I guess we can't, because
An election would precede an appointment in a policy like this?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
You know, like, this might come into play if like, the election gets over and there's gonna be more than two names written in. So unfortunately, what's gonna happen is whoever has the top two amount of write-in votes then, or whoever, sorry, then it's probably gonna have to be is gonna have to start calling people or, or issuing a certificate of election to those people probably and saying you were elected to the village board. And then those people are gonna say, I'm not accepting it, or I am. Until we, until she gets to the list and then we really
So you've never been through this process before?
Not to this extent.
Not in this way.
Not to this extent.
It's an ugly situation.
It is.
And that's where we might run into a problem. If we would get three people that could win, who's gonna fill Shaun's vacancy? Does that work or how does that work?
Well
Because that's only a year yet.
That's, that's still, that would still have to be an appointment.
It can't be an election winner.
Right.
It could be if we held off that long on making an appointment.
Well, it's
I don't know if we can do that.
The two don't, they don't line up. The two don't go together.
So no matter what, we're still gonna have to appoint somebody to fill Shaun's.
Refill Shaun's.
Shaun's is still all you can see.
But, you know, as unlikely as it seems to me, there's the possibility that, you know, maybe there'll be write-ins that, in the April election and, you know, solid solid candidates for the position where even if you your names are ahead or flipped, flipped to go here or whatever, then the loser in that might be a person we would
That's the question I was
Want to select
So then
To fill the appointment, because it's not that far away.
Right, and if we did do it that way, which is exactly what I was thinking, would we have to do would we have to go through one of these processes?
Well, I think we probably Well, I think we probably should. I think we need to have this...
In place, yeah.
This in place, and I think we should probably do that, even though it seems unfair for future. We're not just acting, you know, on the moment.
No.
This is...
So I think, for example, like the school board recent, like, I mean, at some point I've been in Tovers teaching there, had vacancies and went through a process. And I don't remember if at that point they yet had a policy. And they went to first asking the individuals who had, like, lost in the last election.
That's about here.
Yeah.
And started by, you know, the full board. Say there were like six members left on the board. Interviewed the person who had lost, you know, it was a similar situation where there was going to be a vacancy not filled by, you know what I mean? Because they have seats available. And...
So that, they have something written too?
I don't know if it was, if it was written policy or if it's like practice, like a procedure.
I've always felt, you know, in that process, which has been used in different places. And it used here as one and said, you know, a person that lost.
Arizona just got a sentence.
Then is there, is there a reason that person lost? You know, is it the electorate, the voters said, "Oh, you don't want that person." So that's kind of...
In this case though, as we're thinking about April, there's no... It's going to be names written down.
Yeah.
So if somebody's name gets written down on the ballot, it's because somebody decided, "I think that person should be on."
And Lynn, you have an obligation, if you have 23 different names, you have an obligation to post that.
Yeah.
You have to count entirely every different name.
Yeah. And in a situation like this, even Nikki Melso would be telling because there aren't enough candidates on the ballot in the office. So we will count every vote. That's really it. On this, I'm thinking, you're ready, do we want to find out about?
Okay, what I was wondering after you asked that, Lynn. Do you think that it only is applying, that question that you asked, to elected offices on boards, commissions, or committee?
Yeah.
That limits it then.
I can, yeah, confirm that with that. Yeah, any elected for that office?
Mm-hmm.
In our case, we only have, so you could strike everything?
We don't, it doesn't really hit us.
You could strike every, anything other than the village board, right?
Yeah, because it's a point of, but I think, I think what we need to do is take this on...
I'd rather look this over before doing anything else on it than that.
I don't want to act on this for the moment tonight on this. There's no urgency. So let's, let's put it on...
Then I would make a motion that we table acting on this.
Yeah, I don't think we would table it.
Well, it's a consideration item, so...
So, okay, so table?
Table, whatever. And next, what's, what's up next? Well, the...
It's the March.
Yeah, 5th of March, we have the administrator, we have...
Then I would say March 19th.
March 19th.
I, I mean, we're not going to want March 5th. I think it's going to be talking about...
And that'll be in place.
Well, we're going to have to be talking about financing the third advent project and awarding the bid on the 3rd.
Then I would not count the 5th.
No. But we want this in place by...
But March 19th will still be prior to the election.
Prior to the election.
Still be prior to the election.
We're in a sort of a difficult situation this year with an election without candidates.
Wait, so is the election on October? So we're meaning we...
That doesn't mean you have to pass.
Yeah, we're moving it to Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
Or I think we keep forgetting, you know, if we get in a bind, there's special meetings.
Yeah. I mean, I think this is...
There's a need for that sometimes.
We need to do something.
I don't think we're in a bind yet, but I'm just saying.
So I'll second that.
Okay.
We'll post point to the second meeting in March. I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Or will they say aye?
Aye.
Aye, vote, or some carry? President's report update participation in community service. Well, this is kind of a unique, something we've never been involved in, but there is a 10-year-old boy that needs 39 hours of community service. Joe said he'd be willing to work with it. The parents would have to sign a waiver for, how was that written? Is it in here?
Yeah, we spoke with the, our insurance and legal hotline for our insurance company. And they made some good suggestions that we would follow. Parent would be present during the community service.
There's something in there?
No, they didn't.
You said a...
Here, I mean...
Confidentiality, yeah.
And we would have a waiver for the insurance that both parents and the student, obviously you'd have to see how appropriate types of work. Joe was willing to participate in that. The lady I talked to at the insurance hotline, legal services was seen on board. I mean, she's like, "Yeah, there are other communities that do this kind of thing."
Well, I can't, I know you used to do it in the summer.
Court sentence?
Yes.
Court order?
Community service.
Community service.
Yeah.
Green County.
I assume Green County. I guess I didn't know that for sure, but I assume Green County. So we just didn't want to get into a good knowledge of the board being on board.
Does Joe know the particulars of the case?
He knows the particulars of who's requesting that kind of providing the service. I mean, there's some that have any issues with that.
But...
I don't know myself what, why, why the community service was ordered. I don't know that.
10 years old?
So, I mean, you know, and we're just bringing, if you guys are like, "Yeah, let's not go there."
Well, the parent is going to be present during any of this.
That is one of the...
One of the stipulations.
And she...
Could be worse than just having a kid.
The mother already agreed to that, right?
Yes, yeah.
But...
We've done it in the past, but it's old, you know, it's got older.
We know, you know who the parent is. You know the responsible party. Someone's don't know. I've got something. Somebody knows the responsible party before we just give the okay.
Right.
I mean, it's not a parent is going to say, "My kid cut his thumb on this and now I look where I am and yada, yada, yada."
I think we're fine. And I will double, I would double check that with Joe. I mean, when I ran it past him the other day, he was fine.
And do we have contact, does someone have contact with the court through this?
We will have to get, we will, that's something we'll have to obtain. The parent was calling around trying to find where the child could do community service and call here. So we, I first asked Joe because if he wasn't willing to, you know, he was. So then we pursued it with the insurance company. And then we thought we'd come to you guys before we go any further with it. If you're fine with it, we'll pursue it further and make sure all the Ts are crossed and the I's are dotted before we do it. Otherwise, we'll just say, "Sorry, can't help you out now."
On that basis, I'd be willing to go along further.
I think that would be a great opportunity. My only, my only concern is that being in a teacher position, I don't want Joe to get into a situation where he is being held liable for the way he oversees.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Or his employees.
Yeah. So if there's a way to clear Joe, make Joe, you know, however Joe does it, I mean, I would hate to have somebody come back and say, "Well..." Not that it would be Joe or anyone is being abusive or et cetera, and now we're in some other hot water. I mean, I would like it to be, I would love to do it. I just, I think that's what makes us hesitant.
But I see what, Joe should be free from liability for accepting this.
Yes, yeah. I think what we, what we were considering was obviously they all, both parents and the child have to sign the waiver, which doesn't, you know. But then we would have to come up with, and Joe would have to come up with specific job duties. Say it's picking up the park, pulling weeds around the pool house, some of those things. We would, we would then have the parents agree to those specific...
I see.
And then the parent would also have to be present when those, when the child is completing those.
So it's almost like the parent will supervise the community service? Not necessarily like the child is there doing work with Joe?
They would probably have to come and say to Joe, "We're going to do this job."
Right. Gotcha, 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 gotcha. Okay.
I wouldn't mind helping.
But you think we could find out somehow necessarily?
We will have to get the order.
What this kids, yeah, because, I mean, if this kid was straining cats or something, we might look at it differently.
Well, yeah, you don't, we don't want...
It's going to be hard to get...
Right.
You, and but in the same vein, you don't want to have him doing community service in an area where...
Yeah, you want to know...
Where he had issues before.
I mean, you have an obligation to protect the constituency, right?
I would assume...
Right, the county, the county is directing.
Or a judge would, would not have...
He's not going to be ordering community service.
This, but you never know. I mean, that's why I asked for it with Green County because, you know, I know our judges. Yeah, I think it's a good idea. We used to, we used to run into these things back in the day. And say, "Well, we're not going to do this because of liability." We had, we had guys in Joe's position who just said, "I'm not doing this anymore." Because they don't show up, they wreck more shit than they...
More work than...
But still, yeah.
I mean, you go out there and you do something from your goodness of your heart to benefit and then you're punished for that. Who's going to do that? So if it makes us contribute to this young man's rehabilitation, then I say go for it.
Yeah, I agree.
But if it puts the village in any sort of danger, I guess I would hold off. But Joe, so, you know, Joe probably is a good judge of what he's...
Probably a good person.
I guess he would want...
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
So this parent just approached various organizations, whatever? Never thought of that. I was just thought he had to do it in a certain...
I did too. I thought maybe the court chose. Well, I think that's also a positive too, that the parent went out and moved forward on this. So what I don't, what I don't want to see happen is the parent does the community service.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point. And if the parent faces, yeah, and the parent is in more trouble than the kid. Because that's happened. So... And I'm not making any assumptions.
One thing we should know is halfway through, it's going south on us. Can we terminate it? Get out of the, you know? You know, I just think that, you know, 10 hours in, the kids, whatever's happening, and Joe doesn't want to deal with it anymore, I think it's time to bail.
Is there a time for, how many hours is it?
39.
They probably have a check in the, some hours. Yeah, some sort of a checklist for this.
And I think they might be able to do it at other places too, so maybe don't get 10 hours somewhere else and only need 10 from us or whatever. And, you know, I don't know. But we'll check that out.
Maybe they do some time at the pantry sometime. I mean, there are lots of...
And they can suggest that or hope they can talk to.
Yeah. Karen cares.
Joe said there are a ton of trees that need trimming.
So he talked to us about it at our meeting on Wednesday.
Any further business? Here it is now, we are adjourned.